Welcome to the March 14th, 2023 City Council Work Session. I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the Agenda Overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, good afternoon. During our work session Agenda this afternoon, we have a couple annual reports from Melissa Lucy, who's the CEO from Horizon Behavioral Health, and then we have Ashley Kirchner, who's CEO for Downtown Lynchburg Association. Both will step up and I'm sure wow you with their presentations. Then I have a briefing by both Greg Patrick and Greg Wormser about an opportunity, a public-private opportunity with Liberty University. And then a follow-up on from last time, remember Ms. Donna Witt, our Chief Financial Officer, kind of walked you through the city's capital improvement plan. If there are any subsequent questions, any kind of conversation. We did send some information to each of you about, I think there was a conversation about the structured parking garage and some of the repairs that we've done on it. And we have a few business item briefings in a closed session, two items under closed session. With that, Madam Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Benda. Okay, moving on to our work session Agenda Items. Number one, Horizon Behavioral Health Presentation from Ms. Melissa Lucy.
Hi.
Hello.
First, I would like to thank the Mayor and the Vice Mayor, as well as the Board, for having me here today to let me present and tell you a little bit about Horizon and what we're doing. I'd also like to thank Chris for being on the Board at Horizon, so thank you. I'm going to start with our vision and mission. And so, our vision is to provide behavioral health care services that are accessible, consumer-centered, cost-effective, and outcome-based. Our mission is to support and promote the health, independence, and self-worth of individuals and families in central Virginia by providing a continuum of community-based treatment, prevention, early intervention, and after-care services for persons affected by mental health, intellectual disability, substance use, and co-occurring disorders. Next, these are all of Horizon's portfolios, and the thing I want to point out is that within these portfolios, you will have multiple services. So, for example, in emergency services, you're going to have forensics, women's recovery, to name a few, and many more. So, I didn't want you to see the portfolios and think that's all that we provide. On the next page, I've listed services that directly decrease hospital admissions and readmissions, and that's important because that decreases the number of emergency custody orders, as well as therefore temporary attention orders that are issued. And as you all are, I'm sure, aware, that impacts our law enforcement. So, these services maintain the individual in the community, they're higher intensity, and they provide the needs that they would otherwise get in a hospital but at a lower This is a testimonial from a same-day access client, and she specifically asked us to share it and actually sign the release because she wanted people to hear about her experience. And I'm not going to read it because when I go and I see PowerPoints, I hate it when people read straight from the PowerPoint, but you all have it in your packets. But if you have any questions or comments, please let me know. On the next page, you'll see our evidence-based practices. And HPH has made a large effort to use grant funding and Step Virginia dollars to provide regular trainings for all clinical staff. Why is that important? Because that allows us to apply for the larger grants, the HERSHA grants, many other federal grants, SAMPA grants, et cetera. And that therefore helps the community, and it's dollars that we can put back for individuals who wouldn't necessarily be able to pay for those services. At Horizon, we not only provide treatment, we provide prevention services to prevent an individual from needing treatment. And these are a few of the initiatives that Horizon has accomplished throughout the catchment and our prevention department. The thing I want to point out about CIVAR is that it has active members from 12 drug-free community sectors, youth, parents, business, media, schools, state, local government, religious civic, volunteer groups, healthcare, law enforcement, and other drug organizations. All members are committed to the development of trust, transparency, and a transfer of knowledge to advance our mission. With continued community support and interest, CIVAR is positioned to become the lead resource for advancing community conditions, norms, systems, and policies for treatment and recovery in central Virginia. So, this is a pretty powerful group that we're a part of, and I think it's very important for us moving forward as a community working together to solve these problems. These are just some of the outcomes Horizon is proud to report on, and the picture to the right are our new locations. So, we've added a new women's recovery in Bedford, as well as treatment centers for Project Link, which is specific for women who have children and need substance abuse services, as well as OVAAT, which is opioid treatment. The other thing I want to point out is that Horizon still offers virtual and in-person. Those appointments are given based on the preference of the individual. Why are we doing that? Because we want to meet the individual where they're at, we want to make sure that they're comfortable with the services that they're receiving, so they get to choose which way they're going to receive it. Now, there are some exceptions when it comes to our medical providers, so we do have to get labs, so we would have to bring them in for that. We do have to get vitals to make sure there's no complications with their medications. So periodically, even if they choose to do a telehealth with our provider, they would need to come in for that. I only point that out in case somebody tells you they had to come in for something. And then on the next page, again, this is a quote from a student services supervisor in partnership with one of our schools in Lynchburg City. These are additional outcomes that Horizon is proud to point out, and I want to point out that we have no waitlist for our office-based addiction treatment, which is the OVAAT, which is our opioid program. So, anybody that comes in that's in need of that treatment, we put them in the service that day. And we have worked very hard to add to that service, so we have added doctor time, as well as nursing time, to make sure we can meet the needs of the community. So, as you can see, our most recent consumer satisfaction survey indicated that 95% of consumers surveyed felt they had made progress with the issues that led them to seek care. Also, 94% were satisfied with the service that they received from Horizon. The Lynchburg Adult Drug Treatment Court, to date, there have been 11 graduates from the Lynchburg Docket, nine males, two females, ages ranging from 23 to 66 years old. And at the root of this project lies the pursuit of continuous quality improvement through extensive evaluation of programmatic data and stakeholder perspectives in partnership with Liberty University. Our program compares quite favorably against other statewide programs, and this tracks with anecdotal evidence I've observed even nationally. I think Judge Watson strikes a good balance of giving participants every opportunity to succeed while being stern when needed. I think our very low rate of reoffense shows that. So, on this page, I want to point out that since we've started, we've had 19 individuals engaged with the program. We've had four individuals receive immediate transitional housing, one individual received permanent housing, and our goal is to get everybody permanently housed. And the permanent housing is actually ongoing because then we would link them to another grant that we applied for, which we'll hear about in a little bit, actually right now. So, I want to point that one out because they can transition, they can transition from that to permanent supportive housing. So, Horizon applied for a grant, and we received $609,000 to permanently house individuals. This is ongoing, so once we get them that housing, they can stay there until death. Horizon has a contract with Blue Ridge Regional Jail, and this is something I'm extremely proud to talk about. It was in a partnership, and it's been going on now for several years, where we actually go in, we meet with the individuals that are referred to us 30 to 90 days prior to release from the jail, and then we actually meet them at the door on the day of release. We meet them at the door because we've already gotten appointments for them, not just behavioral health, we've gotten housing appointments, we've gotten medical appointments, whatever that person's need is, then that's what we try to arrange prior to them being released. Why do we meet them at the door and arrange to take them from there, right to wherever they need to go? Because that shows us that the stats say statistically, they will succeed if you engage them immediate upon release. So, that's what we do. And last but not least, I'm going to talk about what's next on the Horizon. I do want to point out that Horizon is the first to implement the family checkup model. This is a strength-based, family-centered intervention designed to support parents, efforts to promote children's behavior and mental health, and prevent behavior problems. This model is tailored to meet the needs of each individual family, and again, we are the first in the state of Virginia to implement this, so we're very excited about that. The other thing in the interest of time that I'm going to talk about is the Crisis Receiving Center. Well, let me back up for a minute, and I'll tell you quickly about the Behavioral Health Docket. We did hot off the press find out that we were approved for the mental health docket, so we are very excited about that. Don't have stats to give you because we just found out we're approved, but I did want to mention it. So, the next thing is the Crisis Receiving Center, which will house emergency services, 23-hour observation, detox, crisis residential stay, as well as walk-in. All law enforcement localities will be able to bring their emergency custody orders to this location, and we are in the process now of securing a location. That's going to be very beneficial to all communities in central Virginia because we're going to have a place for individuals to come when they have needs, not just their mental health, but also their substance abuse and their detox needs, as well as if they need to come and just be observed for a little while and assess what their needs are and what we can do to help them. So, it's going to be an all-inclusive crisis center. And that's it.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for coming and giving this update. If you could enlighten Councils to what you can about the Crisis Receiving Center and what the actual benefits would be, I think that'd be very informative, especially since that's a great need that I'm probably a little bit more aware of, being involved with the organization. I think that'd be helpful.
So, right now, there's currently no medical detox in the city or the surrounding counties for central Virginia residents. So, what does that mean? That means if they need detox, they're going to go, and I'm going to start service by service because I think that's the easiest way to explain it. So, if they need detox, then the individual would have to go to the emergency room, and they may or may not get placed into the ICU care where they could get detoxed. So, obviously, that's a need because we don't have it. The biggest need, and the biggest thing that I think it's going to impact our community is that it's going to help our law enforcement. So, we would have law enforcement that would be actually there, that would be their job. We would pay for that law enforcement through the Crisis Receiving Center, just kind of like the school resource officers where there's a contract and the school resource officers are there, and that's what they're there for. What does that do then? Then the officers get to be released. So, an officer gets an emergency custody order, they bring them to the facility, they get to drop and leave, because we have another officer there that is there to take care of them. It also meets the need of the individual in a more holistic manner and a quicker turnaround. So, instead of them sitting in the ER, which is happening right now for days on end, and I'm sure you've heard about that, they would be in a behavioral health facility where we can start treating them immediately as we're observing them. We also would have a 23-hour service, which is new in the state of Virginia, but how does that benefit? So, right now, we have eight hours to do an emergency custody order. No, the police officer would not be staying there for 23 hours, but we would have 23 hours to evaluate the individual to determine what their true needs are, and we would, again, have an officer there if something was to go awry. This is a huge need in the community. Our numbers are rising. Quite frankly, our kids are more in crisis, our adults are more in crisis, and this is a trend across the state, not just central Virginia. But we're no longer seeing fluff cases, we are seeing very severely mentally ill, very troubled individuals that need help. This center would allow us to provide that help. It would also help with the need of keeping them in their community. So, instead of us sending them to a state hospital, if they meet the criteria for residential crisis stay bed, we could provide them crisis services, stabilize them, and get them back into their natural environment.
And so, throughout that time period, outside of that one outlier, for those watching at home and for all, our understanding, when those folks are in that dire need in the current situation, they have to have a law enforcement officer present with them throughout that timeline in the hospital.
Correct.
And that pulls them off the streets in Lynchburg, surrounding counties. You know, I've seen a picture that was shared with me on this topic. I think, you know, I don't want to disclose too much for the public, but far too many police cars from Lynchburg, just sitting at the hospital, and sometimes maybe more than half a shift. So, my second question was going to be what challenges and what opportunities are there for us to potentially help in securing that Crisis Receiving Center?
Crisis Receiving.
Yeah, because obviously, the mental health scene is such a dire need for assistance, and I think this is something that we might be able to be helpful with.
So, I have secured $7 million to date for the center. There is still a little bit more that we need to achieve. I have applied for four more grants, and actually three more since we talked at the board meeting. And I am pretty confident that I'm going to get a few of those, but there could still be a funding gap potentially, depending on whether those come in or not.
I would ask the managers, is there opportunity for the city to potentially engage through CIP funding as opposed to some of the projects we may have been considering?
We can absolutely, Melissa and I met before the presentation today, and she gave me a bit of an overview. There are ways in which that we can bring back opportunities because there is going to be a gap with even all of Ms. Lucy's efforts. I also thought maybe to take a second, and I can't remember, are there net new jobs in this resource?
There are, correct, yes.
There were like 70-some odd?
It was 45 new, and it's going to be 105 total.
So, yes, there are ways in which, depending on what they decide and where they need to go and what they intend to do, whether or not to build new or rehabilitate, we'd have to figure that out with them.
I'd be interested in exploring that, and I'd ask for us to take a look at that in the upcoming CIP. This is clearly a need, it fits into public safety, mental health, it'll help our hospital system, it'll help our law enforcement community, and it'll help the community who needs the help. So, I'd be interested in seeing what that looks like. Thank you, Madam.
I'm thanking for the work you do in our community. I have foster kids, I'm constantly there with different therapists and supportive needs with medications and other things, so I really appreciate that. And the need is, as Councilman Peraldi was mentioning, that Crisis Center is so needed in our community because our law enforcement officers are there constantly. So, to kind of help meet that need, hit through that gap is crucial, so our community can support that, I really appreciate that, and we can look into that to see what we can do to support that effort. Because again, our offices need to be on our streets, more so than just sitting at the hospital to operate, and you have other designated staff there, you know, working with the patients there, so I really appreciate that. I learned so much about your agency. I didn't know you worked with homelessness and the permanent supportive housing grant.
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
So, we have 30 slots, that was a grant that we applied for through the department, and again, we have 30 slots. As we completely fill those 30 slots, I will try to get more funding from the department. It covers everything, from their furniture to their deposit to their last month's rent, and then ongoing, it covers their rent ongoing.
Is this for persons with addictions or any person?
Either, but they do have to have a behavioral health component. Typically, if somebody has an addiction, then they also have a behavioral health component, so they can be duly diagnosed, but they do have to have a behavioral health component.
And are they placed at certain places or just departments in general?
It's anywhere we can get a landlord to agree to do a contract with us for them.
And what's the process to apply for that program?
Just come to our admissions department and let us know you need it.
Wow, great.
We try to make it as easy as possible.
And then the group, the regional group that works with homelessness, I can't think of the name of that group, the coalition that works with homelessness?
Continuum of Care.
Continuum of Care. Do you partner with them as well?
We do. We actually have staff members that actually attend that meeting regularly with them.
Excellent. Great, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? No? Really appreciate your presentation, and I will say that I was at the Blue Ridge Reentry Council Summit last week, and so specifically focusing on the jail piece of, or the reentry piece of what you do, and it's such an essential component of all the services that you supply that are all essential too, but I was really impressed that y'all were there and that you supplied that piece to the community, which is really important, that we are giving second chances to our previously incarcerated, and that we are, and the piece that you supply as far as picking them up and just giving them those steps towards success is so crucial because if they don't have that, the rate of recidivism is so high. So, I think that's really important that they know you guys do that. So, thank you so much for your presentation and all you all do.
Thank you. And the thing I will point out about that program, because I am very, very proud of it, is that was in partnership with the jail, and when I say that, I mean we fully funded it. So, we get no billing, they get no billing. We came, we said we were going to half and half the position, and we've been able to keep it going because it is so essential and it does make a difference.
It does.
A question on that, because I saw in your slides that says that jail diversion program was established in '29 to reduce recidivism. Is there, and I was trying to, maybe these stats, I'm not reading them as a lack of recidivism, but what is the recidivism rate since that's the whole goal of the program, to reduce it?
So, I would have to go back and look at that, but I can, and I can send it to Winter so that he can get you that number because I don't want to misquote what that number is. But, so for recidivism, that's our whole jail diversion program, so that's also in addition to what I mentioned today. That's also talking about us going and meeting individually with individuals in jail because we provide that as well, and provide them counseling in the jail, but I will be happy to get you those numbers.
Who else? Okay, thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Downtown Lynchburg Association Annual Report from Ms. Ashley Kirchner.
Good afternoon, hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm happy to be here to share with you some information about Downtown Lynchburg Association. I'm Ashley Kirchner, the Executive Director of Downtown Lynchburg Association. I'm here today as a partner of the city. We are partners with you, we have been for quite a while, and we enjoy that partnership, and I'm going to tell you a little bit more about that today. We're going to do three things today. I'm going to talk about our annual report, which I believe you have in your packets, it looks like this. So, we're going to walk through that a little bit, you have all of our stats and a lot more detail in there, but really, we're going to kind of anecdotally walk through what all of this means and why it's important. Going to talk a little bit about the state of downtown today as well, and then give you a preview of the work that we plan to do in the coming year. So, first, I want to talk though a little bit about logistics and kind of how we're structured. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We have a staff of five, including myself, I brought all of them with me there, there they are, smiley faces right there. We are governed by a board of downtown stakeholders, currently that number is at 17, and they represent a lot of different type of people in downtown, big business, small business, professional, and retail restaurant and attraction. We have developers, property owners, and some city staff as well. So, all of those people help govern the strategy and all of the things that we do to make sure that at all times we are serving both the community and the downtown stakeholders. When we talk about our work in downtown Lynchburg, we define that within the service area as outlined in the MOU that we have with the city, and that service area is the river to Clay Street, Fifth Street to the expressway. Most recently, a lot of the Fifth Street Historic District has actually been added into our service area. So, now, from Fifth Street, from the river, all the way up to Federal Street, and we're really happy to be able to work with those properties and those business owners as well. So, as it states, we have been a partner with the city for 25 years, which is pretty astounding. We're going to get a little bit more into how we got started and why we got started, but first, I want to mention some structures and some organizations that we are affiliated with. We, as an organization, so Downtown Lynchburg Association, this type of organization exists across the country. We are not an anomaly. In almost every great city, even any mediocre city frankly, that you can think of, right? These type of organizations exist, and they work with the municipality to focus on downtown revitalization. So, these two organizations, Main Street America and International Downtown Association, these are all organizations that help people in the place management industry, which is the name of the industry that we're in, specifically Main Street America, and then on a state level, Virginia Main Street. The Virginia Main Street Program is housed within Virginia's Department of Housing and Community Development. It provides resources to our organization, it also provides pretty incredible grant opportunities. So, we work with them a lot. Within International Downtown Association, we get to sit with and learn from cities all across the country and sometimes across the world, take best practices from those places, and bring them back here to us. I am going to take a tiny moment for a brag just right now, because last year, we did win an International Downtown Association Award of Excellence, we were one of only 35 cities to do so, so I'm just not going to move off of that quite yet, I wanted to mention that. Next year, I won't mention it, but I wanted one more year-old mileage out of that. So, why did we get started in the first place? Where did this partnership come from? Well, if you want to go back and remember, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask you to raise hands, but how many of y'all are from here? Not, okay, I got one sterling, really? Okay, we got one from here. So, I'm sure most of you have been here long enough to know though that at one point, downtown was mostly vacant, and this is the trend that is all throughout the country, right? At one point, downtowns in our country were the centers of commerce. They were, everyone had to go and they had to shop, everything that they wanted to get had to be done in downtown, it was also where all the services were provided. In the 70s and the 80s, you know, new places sprung up throughout communities that provided competitors to those city centers. In Lynchburg, it was first the Plaza, and then it was Ward's Road, and all of a sudden, everyone didn't have to do their shopping down here, and all of a sudden, families had two cars and they had choices. And while that was great for the rest of our community, what it meant was that the ecosystem in downtown was not one that businesses could thrive in anymore, so they closed or they left, or at least the majority of them did. And so, what was left? A downtown, a city center full of vacant buildings, which does not help with tourism, it does not help with property values, and it certainly doesn't help with perceptions of safety and community identity. So, in the late 90s, the city said, okay, we're going to do what we've seen other communities in the country do, and we're going to reinvest in our downtown, and we're going to revitalize it. So, they created two things. They created the downtown riverfront master plan, which was the first master plan for our downtown, and they created Downtown Lynchburg Association, at the time was called Lynch's Landing. So, they did that, and they created those things together because they knew, excuse me, because although that they knew that the city government could and would do significant things toward the goal of downtown revitalization, they also knew that they would need a community partner to help advance the plan, one that could leverage sponsorship, grants, private sector donations, and volunteer power to help with business retention, attraction of visitors through special events and promotion, beautification, and who would galvanize our citizens around the idea of coming back to downtown. So, they did all of this because they knew that for Lynchburg to truly thrive, we would need a strong city center. So, this remains true today. It is still very, very important and vital that our downtown continues to grow and remain strong for the benefit of the whole city. It can attract new businesses, entrepreneurs, and investors, and I can tell you that every major city, or excuse me, every major company in this city that I sit down with, whether they're in downtown or they're not in downtown, and I say, hey, what can I do for you? How can I help you do business? They say to me, I need you to make downtown cooler so my young employees want to stay and live here, right? Attraction and retention is difficult for them, and to compete with larger cities, what they need, A, they need great schools, and B, they need a really strong downtown. So, that's what we're working on. It can serve as a draw for tourists, it can showcase a city's unique character and cultural heritage and identity, and it can contribute to our overall livability as a city. So, all of that is to say is, it's important, and the reason the city has partnered with us for 25 years is they understand the importance, and they understand that by leveraging your investment with community investment, we can do more. All right, so I'm really going to get into it now, I'll move past my preamble. Last year, we did a lot of work, but they were all around these three strategic priorities. First, to foster a thriving and diverse storefront economy, second, to create a lively and engaging downtown atmosphere, and third, to create a truly welcoming environment. Fostering a thriving and diverse storefront economy is very important to us. We know that our small businesses are crucial to the success of downtown Lynchburg, they provide the amenities and the attractions, they're truly at the heart of everything we do. I want you to picture downtown with no businesses and think about what that looks like to you. Now, the reason we need to support them is because doing business in an urban environment is not easy. It's difficult. Without the critical mass of having all of our buildings filled, these early adopters, they need that extra support to be able to be successful, and that's what we're here for. We do a lot of things in this realm. Last year, we launched a special project called Hill City Eats. Some of you may know about this or have seen it or even own it, but we created a cookbook that highlights 35 of our downtown businesses, the restaurateurs behind those businesses, the places, the food. And in November of 2022 is when it finally actually went on sale in person, and we sold out 1,000 copies within two months. So, it was very clear that people in this community were excited to celebrate that, but what we found also is not that it was just purchased by people who wanted to cook some recipes or give it as gifts, what we found is that larger companies in this community were buying these in large quantities to hand to their customers and clients to show them just how awesome downtown Lynchburg really is. So, we were proud of this, of this project, and we continue to be as we will, keep these on sale for the next couple years. From a marketing and promotion standpoint, we are the marketing and promotion engine for bringing people downtown. We run the social media, email marketing, website, and other advertising venues for downtown. We have quite a lot of power in this area. We are one of the largest, if not the largest, social media reach for Lynchburg promotion. And for those that may not be into social media, I understand that that might not seem important, but this is how people find out what's going on in downtown. It is how we introduce people to new businesses, attractions, and events. Uh, it is how we introduce people to new businesses, attractions, and events. It's how we drive traffic down here, it's how we retain businesses. It's how, also how we amplify the marketing messages of the businesses themselves as they have access to our reach. And just for a little context here, um, our eighteen thousand followers on Instagram is three times as much as downtown Roanoke has. So for the size community that we have, we're really punching above our weight in this area, and we take marketing and promotion really seriously. Uh, so we're very proud of this effort. We also do a couple more things, um, these are again, just highlights, but for small business support. We are always listening to their needs, connecting them to each other and to important resources. We offer free marketing consultations with our marketing director. We organize Small Business Saturday and the Spring Shop Crawl to generate foot traffic directly into retail businesses. We partner with our local media outlets to offer co-op marketing opportunities. And we also run the Downtown Lynchburg Gift Card Program, which has actually directed eighty thousand dollars worth of businesses directly into downtown businesses, a lot of which would have likely leaked out of the community through Visa gift cards or Walmart gift cards or something that doesn't go directly into our local business pockets. So that's small business support. We also work on cultivating a lively and engaging downtown atmosphere. From the history of this, uh, organization, events have always been a part of what we do. And the reason for that is that getting people down here and engaging and, uh, getting them to see the progress and being a part of what's going on has always been an important, um, component. Last year, we ran two large-scale events, movies in the park and ri- uh, fireworks on the riverfront, both of which happened in Riverfront Park. These were free and open to the public, and these are important, um, components of the work that we do. They drew large crowds from all over the region. Fireworks alone brought in three thousand people just to Riverfront Park and another one point five thousand, I think it was one point five, it's in your packet, on the bluff walk. So collectively, we had, uh, at least forty-five hundred people watching, but that doesn't count all the people watching from rooftops and restaurants that were, you know, there to enjoy the day. So special events like this are important in a few ways. They bring people together from diverse backgrounds and neighborhoods to celebrate and enjoy our city. And if any of you all have been to our events, you, you know that feeling that you get and that seeing our community come together. These events create a sense of belonging and shared identity among attendees. And perhaps most importantly for us, they attract visitors from inside and outside the community, which can generate revenue for local businesses such as re- restaurants, hotels, and shops. We never give everyb- everyone, we never give, uh, our attendees at these events, everything they need. We don't feed them entirely, we don't give them everything, because we want them into the local restaurants, right? So that's a pre- pretty big tenant of our work. And then lastly, we work on creating a truly welcoming environment. We do this through beautification, placemaking, and public art projects. These work to foster community engagement, enhance public spaces and vibrancy, and add vibrancy to blighted areas and also to attract visitors. Two years ago, we completed Art Alley, which you may be familiar with. It has become an important gateway and an attraction for our community. But last year, I want to highlight two projects specifically. The Creating Our Culture mural came out of a desire to elevate Lynchburg's many artists of color, to provide exposure to their work and to raise awareness for the wealth of talent we have in our community. So we partnered with a company called Blackwater Branding, which is housed in downtown, to do the design. And, uh, we then worked with two additional mural artists to execute this mural, this mural on the city market lofts. The QR code that you see there goes to a website that directs, uh, excuse me, that features eight local artists of color, their work and their stories, and those artists will rotate, um, on a quarterly basis. One of the outcomes of this project was the social media outpouring we had from people saying, I never thought this was something I would see in Lynchburg, I feel so welcome in this community now. And that was, ooh, I just got a little, excuse me, a little choked up. That was, uh, that was a really cool thing, because that was our goal. So it was nice to get that feedback back. The City Auditorium Murals, so if, this is a really good example of how public art and placemaking can take something that was blighted and put in very little time and money and make it pretty awesome. So you'll see at the top there, that's what the City Auditorium looked like about a year ago. Those are plywood that are boarding up the entrances. Obviously, this has been a vacant, uh, place for a long time. I will say that those, that's the nicest I've ever seen that plywood look, it used to look worse. What happens when a visitor walks by a space like this and sees graffiti and sees things boarded up? It makes them feel that that area may be unsafe. It also attracts more graffiti and more, um, behavior that shouldn't be on our city streets, so we saw this as an opportunity. We partnered with local cartoonist Stephen Kissel to turn this challenge into an opportunity, and he added, uh, fun and playful pop of color to the plywood. So, uh, now when you walk by there, that's what it looks like, and hopefully you feel a little more, um, comfortable and excited when you walk in that area. And then lastly, bluff walk lights. Last year, each year we try to ramp this up a little bit. We pay for the lights to be put up and maintained. Um, and this year we added a little bit more, and we just always hear such feedback that people love, um, seeing the lights during the holiday season. I want more here, we're going to talk more about that later. So put a pin in this one. So, you know, that was our last year, where is downtown today? So downtown is strong and is moving forward. We can measure this in a few ways. Uh, one of those ways is continued private investment. So up here, we've got a brand-new restaurant that opened only a couple months ago. On the top right, we have a development that's in process on Twelfth Street. Bottom left is a development on Fifth Street that's in process and about to be, um, fully activated for the first time in quite a while. Uh, and to me, continued private investment and sales of buildings and new and more developers that are coming onto the scene and seeing this as an opportunity is really, uh, an indicator for us of the trajectory of downtown. Also, our storefront vacancy rate. Last year I came and reported to you that it was twenty-four percent, as of this year it's twenty-two. So obviously not a huge chunk that we've pulled out of that, but certainly going in the right direction. And we'll talk more about vacancy in a little bit. Um, in terms of gross receipts, this is probably the most quantitative way to really look at what the visitation in downtown Lynchburg looks like. We, you know, in the middle there, you see a giant pandemic, right? So we know that visitation certainly slowed down in twenty and twenty-one. And I think the real story of what you're looking at right now is that we are on the other side of that dip. If you look at twenty-nineteen versus twenty-twenty, you can see that all of those gross receipts have recovered. But specifically looking at twenty-one and twenty-two, you can tell that exponentially, we are not just coming back, but really growing and bringing more and more people down to the district. So this is a really easy way to find out how many people are coming down here and spending money, which is certainly part of the goal. Now, I want to say, excuse me, before I talk about what's next, um, I do want to mention, you know, as I talk about the state of downtown, as I talk about the trajectory and also in the context of our work, please understand that in no way am I saying we are solely responsible for all of the things I'm talking about here today. Uh, I want to recognize all of the city builders that came before us, the councilmen, city management, city staff, community partners, and all of the current people that are working to make this happen. We are a partner for a reason. We work very closely alongside many city departments and other partners to all work toward a common vision, and we're really proud of that. So what's next? As for Downtown Lynchburg Association, um, you don't have this in your packets, I'm going to bring this to you later this week, but this is our new strategic plan. We put this together with the help of a number of different stakeholders to really map out what the future looks like, at least for the next three to five years, for the work of our organization. And here are some of the highlights from that. First, a storefront business focus. Now, obviously, as I've sta- as I've stood up here, I've spoken a lot about storefront business support. But as we look forward, we will be fully prioritizing the retention and attraction of downtown businesses. We're proud that we went down from twenty-four percent to twenty-two, but twenty-two percent of, of storefronts is still quite a lot of vacancy. Again, put, putting yourself in the position of being a visitor to our city and walking by these vacant storefronts, we see it as the primary challenge. So how are we going to tackle that? Well, there are a number of different programs that we have already started and will be starting. For example, we have just, um, started our Launch LYH Program. It is an entrepreneur competition program that was funded in part by a grant from the state, uh, by Truist Foundation and a number of different, um, corporate sponsorships and some support from the city as well. And what that program does is it invites entrepreneurs. We had over a hundred applications for this program. We narrowed it down to the twenty-five business concepts that we felt like were the most solid and likely to succeed and would add to the amenities in downtown. And as of last night, they started an eight-week small business education series. Um, they're separated into new and existing businesses. That education is run by the Small Business Development Center. At the end, they will pitch their ideas and will compete to win, um, a grant, all of which is part of a pool, will be giving away a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to, um, these businesses. At which point, we will find them, match them with a storefront, and they will become a downtown Lynchburg amenity. So programs like that, we are also going to be more actively recruiting businesses by going to other communities and finding some great amenities and saying, hey, have you, have you heard about Lynchburg? I mean, would you think about your second or third location? Here's a list of spaces we have and incentives, and how can we convince you to, to join us? Uh, so there are a lot more gonna, things that we're going to do in that area. New events and attractions. So obviously, we see a picture here of Riverfront Park, that is going to be probably the most significant change in downtown we'll see in the next three years, and that's exciting. So as part of that, we're going to be envisioning new events and new amenities and attractions for our downtown. The biggest one that we know will already be happening this year, and I'm so very excited about this. I mentioned lighting the bluff walk previously, but this year, we are going to be making a major capital investment and transforming the bluff walk into an interactive, engaging, holiday lighting extravaganza, a six-week-long, uh, event and installation, much like, uh, Illuminights in Roanoke, if you've been there. Because frankly, I'm sick of seeing my friends go out of town to spend money in Roanoke when we don't have something here for them. So I want to redirect all of that energy and those dollars back into downtown, um, and we're excited about that as well. And then lastly, I want to mention something that is in our strategic plan and something that actually has been in the city's master plan for downtown for these entire twenty-five years, and that is the concept of a business improvement district. So as downtown Lynchburg continues to grow, so too will the services needed to maintain it. In most downtowns, the type of work that we've discussed here today, along with additional programs that help keep the downtown clean and safe, like sidewalk cleaning, graffiti mitigation, and ambassador programs, are funded through a structure called a business improvement district. Dense urban districts need a lot of work and maintenance. So what often happens in these cities is around the central business district is a boundary, and within that boundary, the property owners, often it is associated with property, the property owners in that district pay a small additional tax on top of their property that then goes into a special dedicated fund that is managed by the town town organization to provide services above and beyond the baseline services of a city. Now, we don't have to look far to see other cities that are using this model. Roanoke, Stanton, Richmond, Hampton, Winston-Salem, Asheville, and Durham all have business improvement districts. And I would venture to say every time you go to a city and you think, God, it's really clean and it's really beautiful and everything just looks so well-maintained, I would venture to say it's probably through a business improvement district. So what we will be doing this year is taking initial steps to investigate the property owner's interest, the downtown property owner's interest in a business improvement district. Cause essentially, or ultimately, we will want their support to do that. So to conclude, I urge you to uphold your commitment to the ongoing revitalization of our downtown area. While we have made significant progress, there's still so much work to be done, and we face persistent challenges. It's important to recognize that thriving urban cit- excuse me, that thriving cities do not materialize spontaneously. It takes the collective effort of many individuals working tirelessly behind the scenes to bring about meaningful change. So let's keep working together to grow our downtown so our entire, entire city can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirschner. Are there any questions from council?
Councilwoman Dullin?
Thank you, I just have a question about the empty storefronts on Main Street. How many of those are owned by folks that don't reside here?
That, I'm sorry?
That don't live here.
That don't live here, uh, very few, actually.
So they are storefronts, that you can probably get some action out of?
Whether or not you can get immediate action, I, let me rephrase it this way. Of the totality of all of our storefronts that are vacant, which I think the number is sixty-five, I'm, I'm going to fact-check that for you, a good majority of them do have the potential for development in the near future. There, you know, I think when we're focusing on Main Street, there are some that are, that are owned maybe by two or three people. But when we're looking outside of that specifically, there are so many property owners that are either in development right now or have ready-to-go spaces, raising their hands, saying, bring me a person and I will put them in the storefront. So I know at times it can seem overwhelming, but, um, not only do we do ha- do we have some good partnerships on Main Street that are, you know, in the process of developing, but we also have so many other storefronts really waiting to receive a good tenant.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Aldi?
Okay, I have a very important question. If you're going to do six weeks for Christmas lights, when do you start? And when do the six weeks end? Because if you talk to my fiance, six weeks is not enough.
Six weeks is the minimum, I didn't want to overpromise. We had a very, uh, serious conversation in our office about whether we start this before Small Business, Small Business Saturday or after, ultimately, we're probably going to go mid-November, because I didn't mention this, but we're going to kick it off with a major new holiday event in coordination with the Craddock Terry and their tree lighting. So as long as they're willing to go early with us, we're going to go big.
Okay, so Rachel would furiously disagree with you, and she would say it has to start bef- on November first, and I would say probably by the end of January?
If Rachel has money, she can give me a call.
Thank, thank you for your report. Um, I, I, it reminded me, I owe you some photos. Uh, the Christmas lights are particularly sentimental for me and my family as, as they were utilized in our proposal. So it was very, very wonderful, I'm looking forward to seeing what that looks like. Can't say enough about what you all do and your staff. I'm trying to remember, uh, some of the things we spoke about when the mayor and I took a tour of downtown with you and just some of the opportunities here, and, um, if not for your vision, your, your staff, team, and, and even the business owners of downtown and those living there, uh, we wouldn't be here without some of what you guys do. And I'm looking forward to seeing what new things come from DLA. And I'm thankful for everything that you guys do.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Thank you. If you can back up one slide, I know you mentioned this was your quantitative analysis slide, so that's the slide I'm going to be looking at.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is under my control, yep. I was waiting for someone to do it for me.
Um, so, so this one, obviously, that your fa- fa- fall column or your final column, it really should compare twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, because as you mentioned, it was a big dip in the middle. So when I look at the difference between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two, it's about a, you know, especially when you're looking at the local sales, and that's the grocery receipts is what I think how you present it, is that's about a two percent growth between twenty-nineteen and average annual growth between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two. When we look at the quantitative element of it, the local sales, I believe that's where the locality gets about one percent of those local sales, the grocery receipts, you're looking at about twenty-two, twenty-three thousand difference between twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two, you know, after three years. So, um, obviously, we, the, the local taxpayer spends a lot of money downtown, as you mentioned, the, the continued, uh, improvements and whatnot. When you're looking at those numbers of over a three-year period of growth of twenty-three thousand dollars, how, how do you justify that?
I would say that the tax revenue that's generated within the district alone is not the only inherent benefit of investing in downtown. As I mentioned, um, attracting and retaining businesses throughout the community is, uh, very much reliant on having a quality of life that is attractive to other people. I would also say, I'm, I don't have on here the comparison of these numbers between this and the rest of the community. You know, the fact that these businesses are still recovering from COVID is very much, um, what we're hearing from them. So, uh, you know, I think as we look at these numbers, this is not the whole story of what our downtown is adding to, to this community. So that's how I would answer that.
But I guess when you start looking at and unpeeling what the actual, th- th- those numbers mean, and you look at the fact of some of the inflation just in the grocery receipts have been up fifty percent. Like meals, hamburgers used to cost fi- five bucks, now it's ten or twelve bucks. And so as inflation happens, grocery receipts go up tremendously. So I would, I would assume that it would have been a, a whole lot more just from inflation, but, so anyway. So just since you mentioned and had the slide up there, I'd, I'd kind of look at it maybe a little different than just looking at the difference between twenty-one and twenty-two, but really kind of making a trend between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two, which is before COVID, after the craziness, uh, and then after COVID. Um, it's, it's fairly, it's a fairly moderate, uh, increase, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, yes, thank you for the information, that was very informative. And I appreciate being from Lynchburg, I have seen the transformation of how it used to be. So we appreciate all the hard work you and your team are, are doing here in our community. And it shows the investment is really paying off, how it's been a loft to downtown, so many businesses are popping up, new business ventures. And the, especially I love the if, the thing you're doing now with the, um, come like a shark tank kind of thing, but with other businesses. So I really appreciate that. Um, I went to the openings for the Art Alley as well as the, other than the city market, um, and those were just some fantastic events. Um, it just brings up a fresh air to our community, and it shows just diversity and how it's such a welcoming community and how Lynchburg continues to thrive. We always talk about having a community with a great quality of life. And things like this with, with downtown, with what you're doing in the downtown district, it really adds that quality to life between that and our trails, is what really, several other things as well. But it really attracts people to our downtown, that's like the Mecca of a city is the downtown, the Main Street. I will see what the Main Street looks like, so we, we appreciate that. And thank you for all the work you're doing and your team is doing to continue to make Lynchburg a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dullin?
Thank you. I just wanted to say one thing when we were talking about the comparison. I, I would wager to say that in the first six to nine months of twenty-twenty-two, a lot of people still were not going on.
a lot of people still were not going out and participating in social events. So I, I think you need one more year under your belt before you can really compare it to 2019 or something.
Yeah, I think that's true, and that's what we're hearing from the businesses as well. So, thank you.
I enjoyed our tour. And as I told you, as a mother of, of four boys ages 16 to 23, I have focus groups at my house all the time of all the kids that have all the grand ideas of what they want to see downtown. And they're all very excited about what they've seen over the last few years and are excited to hear about what's coming. And so I've, I've been excited just to see how far we've come in this, the four years I've been in the region. And I think you're doing a great job. So, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Proposed new Lynchburg Fire Department's fire station in partnership with Liberty University, Mr. Craig, Greg Patrick.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Really excited to be here today with our Fire Chief Greg Wormser to talk to you about a great opportunity for a partnership with Liberty University on a new fire station that is, will be just off Oddfellows Road and Liberty Mountain Road. Want to recognize some special guests with us here today from Liberty University. We've got Craig Pettit, Vice President of Real Estate with Liberty University, and Matt Grig, Director of Real Estate with Liberty University. So thank you, gentlemen, for being here with us. Again, really excited about the opportunity of this, of this partnership. In this presentation, we're going to give you a brief overview of the potential partnership that's, that's on the table. And then Chief Wormser will give you some information about why a fire station in this area is really important and would be needed, whether or not we were able to, to, to build it in partnership with Liberty University. So first, a project overview. So Liberty and the city would partner in the construction of a new Lynchburg Fire Department fire station on Oddfellows Road at the intersection of Oddfellows and Liberty Mountain Road. Liberty would provide the land to build the station, and the city would lease that station from Liberty University. It would be a, a long-term lease. I, i- in effect, we would lease it in perpetuity for as long as it was used as a, a fire station. This, this is just like any City of Lynchburg fire station. We would fund all of the annual operating costs. That would include staffing, fire rescue apparatus, and the maintenance of the station. And then of, of course, one of the, the most important aspects of, of partnering with Liberty is that we would be able to look for additional opportunities to leverage that partnership. We've discussed a number of possible ways that that might go, but there are some exciting prospects out there after we get the fire station up and running. So what are some of the major deal points here? The city would fund through a lease the cost to construct a standard fire station. We'll, we'll give you some, some drawings later on in the presentation about, of what that fire station might look like. Liberty University would then fund any construction costs, sort of, that are above standard to add Liberty University design, design aesthetics to the station, to the extent allowable by law. That the, the, the lease with Liberty would not include any costs associated with the ground lease for the capital repayment period. So typically, we build a fire station like this, we would amortize the costs over 30 years in a lease. Over that 30-year period, we would pay no ground lease on the land that we built the fire station on. So in effect, this is a, a tip, I think Craig would tell you, this is an atypical deal for Liberty in, in that, in that regard. So for the first 30 years, we'd, we'd get access and use of the land essentially for, for free. The city would fund the acquisition and maintenance and replacement of fire rescue apparatus. In, in an upcoming slide, you will see a couple of things about, about fire apparatus. Number one, they are extraordinarily expensive. Number two, it takes a long time from order to delivery. So we'll talk about that further in upcoming slides. And then the other thing we've discussed with Liberty is that Liberty may fund at, at their costs, potentially adding their colors or other imagery to, to that apparatus as allowable by law. There are some church-state law considerations there. But this is, this is a, a deal that has been, or an idea that has been put into place. East Carolina University, the Tampa Bay Buccaneers have a, have a similar agreement in place with their, with the Tampa Bay Fire Department. So it is certainly a precedent that has been set out there. Again, this is the location of, potential location of the fire station. You can see that is the roundabout on Oddfellows Road as it intersects with Liberty Mountain Drive. And I will now turn it over to our Fire Chief Greg Wormser, who will give you a little bit of information about why a fire station in the area is so important.
Thanks, sir. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you again so much for having us this afternoon. So as you're aware and as we've talked about previously, call volumes continue to rise in our city. The calls for 911 service continues to grow both on the upper end of Campbell Avenue as well as the southern boundary around 460 towards the Timberlake Road area. Obviously, call volume is also rising in other areas of our city with just north of 18,000 calls being run last year by our incredible service providers. So we have had the addition of Medic 8, just as a reminder, and certainly want to thank you for that. And that does not go unnoticed. Know that with the addition of Medic 8, that medic unit is already going to exceed the call volume that we predicted and forecasted that it would run. And so certainly, we are getting some value add there. Want to talk for a minute about the extended travel time that we have along the 460 corridor, Tyreana and Liberty University. So the stations that service those areas in particular of our city are located on Grace Street, Ford Avenue, as well as Miller Park. And so those stations, because of their location geographically and the need for serviced, service delivery in those areas and extended travel time would certainly necessitate the need for the station to be located, you know, in the proximity that was, is proposed. Ultimately, this provides a workload, workload relief for those stations. Previously mentioned Station 3 on Ford Avenue 6 in Miller Park and Station 8 on Timberlake Road. One of the important points about developing a new fire station and making sure that we have the right apparatus is lowering insurance premiums through the insurance services office. So one of the things that adding a ladder truck would do would lower insurance premiums for both businesses and residences, residents that are in this area and that are serviced by this area, as well as the rest of the city. In addition, ISO also grades on training needed flyer flow and communication, some other, some other elements there. But certainly apparatus and why a ladder truck versus some other type of apparatus. That's the, that's the important point to take away is the value add to our citizens who are going to get some relief. City, City of Lynchburg currently has an ISO of two. And May the 10th, we're going to be visited by some assessors who are going to look at our current situation as it relates to communications, training needed, fire flow, and apparatus. And we hope to lower our rating sometime in the very near future. And again, of course, this extends to our businesses and residences, and residents in that businesses will want to relocate here, businesses will want to redevelop here when we have lower insurance premiums because of the public safety value add. So what we're proposing essentially is two units at this station with some room to grow. A medic unit, which is nine people, that includes a relief factor. This addresses the growth in the call volume on the EMS side of, of our workload and to continue to increase in call volume. Again, the ladder truck addresses the need to lower the insurance premiums for our residents. That it would include 12 people to staff that ladder truck. And it serves areas, industrial areas of our city, as well as the university that don't currently have that type of service because of the location and the way that our system is built. This is just an example of what was provided to us about what a station could look like. Obviously, as Mr. Patrick pointed out, one of the key elements is that certainly because it would be on Liberty's property, they would certainly be able to build and have aesthetics related to the university and, and the construction type would be similar to what, what would be found in the rest of the university. Again, just another depiction of what this looks like, what the fire station would look like. The difference here in this particular picture is we're recommending a three-bay station somewhere in their neighborhood of about 14,000 square feet all total, as opposed to what you see here, which is a two-bay station. It gives us some room to grow. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Patrick.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Now, onto the numbers. The construction of a standard fire station right now, we are estimating anywhere between $5 and, and $7 million. That is roughly the funds required to build about a 14,000-square-foot station, three bays, as, as Chief described there. If you look at the estimate of a capital lease associated with a station like that, we are looking in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $450,000 a year to pay off the, the, the $5 to $7 million initial investment. From there, I mentioned a ladder truck, the fire apparatus is expensive. Right now, ladder truck is probably closer to that $2 million number than that $1.6 million number. A heavy medic, probably closer to the $600,000 than the $750,000. So on top of the price, you know, two to two and a half million dollars, we're looking at a lead time from order to delivery of two to three years. So I can tell you Liberty can build a fire station in a lot less than two to three years. So we, we want to get a jump on ordering the apparatus as, as quickly as possible. Again, as Chief mentioned, staffing, you'd have nine on the medic, you'd have 12 on the ladder. That provides a relief factor. Fire staffing is peculiar in that oftentimes, the more firefighters you have, the less it costs to run the, the fire station as you don't need callbacks when folks are out, which means you don't have to pay overtime. So it's very important to build in a, a relief factor there. So that 20, those 21 FTEs run you anywhere from $1.00 to $1.50 million to $1.80 per year. And then non-personnel costs, the, the non-personnel costs associated with the fire station are primarily maintenance-related. And in the early years, those costs are negligible but would grow as, as the fire station aged. One of the negotiate, the, the points we're negotiating with Liberty University is the inclusion of a maintenance reserve within the capital lease payment to make sure that we actually build a, a maintenance reserve related to that station so that when we do need to make improvements, capital improvements to the station, that maintenance reserve would be able to be, to be used and accessed for that, for that purpose. Next steps, first and foremost, negotiate the final lease agreement with Liberty University. This will require the approval of city council and either the full Liberty University Board or the Board of Trustees. So we've, we've got to get, we've got to nail down the final details of the lease agreement. We are recommending that we get in queue now using existing FY 2022 year-end surplus funds to purchase these fire, fire trucks. That would require a budget amendment to appropriate those funds for use as, as soon, as soon as council signals that they would like, that you would like to go forward with this. And then begin the SAFER grant application. SAFER, it's an acronym. I'm not sure exactly what it means. But essentially, it is a grant to expand fire service in localities. That grant would essentially pay our personnel costs for the fire station for the next three or four years. And, and there's some, there's some different language in there that if, if you hire veterans, that actually extends the, the period of repayment. So we would look to do everything we can to, to leverage, to leverage those opportunities. But that's the end of the, the presentation. We'd be happy to take any questions for, for either me or, or Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Vice Mayor Fraldy?
I think in this instance, saying go Flames may not be the best part. Sorry, I had to work with me. This is a phenomenal concept. I, I couldn't be more excited to see where this goes. I'm sure the dollars are going to be changing from now until tomorrow. And then who knows what two years from now looks like. Needless to say, though, I, I would hope that this council would, would ask us to pursue this, to see what it looks like and continue the conversations. Because quite frankly, the, the needs for public safety, as this council knows and the community knows, are continuing to grow, as the chief noted. The notion of a standard station, I, I don't think there's going to be anything standard about this if I know our friends from Liberty. So I, I know what we're getting with this. Sure, there's, there's costs, but I think there's certain core responsibilities of government that we need to make sure we fund and meet, and public safety is right at the top for me. So I'm very inclined to see council move this direction and ask staff to continue the conversation. And I can't wait to, to put the wet down in and put those, those vehicles in and cut the ribbon. Without seeing any of the further dollars, I say go and try to figure this thing out and make it work.
Anyone else? Councilwoman questions?
So this is exciting, and it's also necessary in my mind. Our firefighters and paramedics are overworked and understaffed. We've known that for many years. And when we get to that point, it not only puts our community at risk, but it also puts all of our first responders at risk. Not just them, but also our police officers. Because if something happens where one of our police officers gets injured and we're out of ambulances, we can't take care of them either, right? So it's very important that we have the appropriate staffing levels to, to not just protect our citizens, but also to protect our first responders. Very thankful to see this proposal coming together with, with our community's most important strategic partner, Liberty University. There's no doubt the economic impact that Liberty provides for our city and everything that they offer. So that's very exciting. And I'm particularly excited about the Flames-branded fire apparatus. I'll say that. And I, and I don't see any church-state related issues with that because we've previously had GLTC buses branded with Liberty University Flames on them. So with that being said, I think that this is also going to be great for our businesses and our homeowners with upgrading to ISO 1 by, by going this direction. And it's an investment that's not only going to save lives and protect our city, it's also going to directly impact the wallets of our citizens and our businesses with reduced insurance premiums when we, when we're able to make that upgrade to ISO 1. So I applaud the Fire Chief for, for pushing forward to, to get that done. What I would like to see, and you mentioned maximizing it, is seeing the city start moving toward the direction of being a veterans' preference employer to maximize on the SAFER grant revenue that we could get from the federal government because it's going to extend that out there. And I think it's staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. Is that right, SAFER? You asked that question?
Okay.
Is that it? Staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. So it'd be great to see if we could push forward on that, that veterans' preference envelope specifically to get the most out of this. That's all I have to say. I appreciate it, and I look forward to supporting this.
Lieutenant?
Forgive me, I just forgot to say thank you for, to our friends up the, up the mountain for being willing to at least negotiate on this and see where it goes. I really do hope it works. My, I do remember talking to Dr. Privo the first time I met him. He asked me, wow, what do you, what do you need? We need a fire station. Now, I'm not taking credit for this, but I do want to commend both the, the university and, and the city manager and the, and your team for, for supporting this. My only thought, Station 71? Just a thought? I don't know. I don't know if that's too cumbersome to say on a radio, but whatever.
Anyone else?
Thank you. I guess first of all, I'm, I guess I got to disclose as, as a professor at, I'm a member of a group, professors of Liberty University, but I can talk about this objectively and impartially. I do think this is a wonderful thing. It's fantastic to see. Just a quick question, Greg. On the next steps, the second step down, it says require a budget amendment to use the surplus funds. What's involved in a budget amendment?
We, we would, I'd defer any legal ramifications to our city attorney, but typically, we would draft a resolution or an ordinance that would appropriate from fund balance an amount sufficient to purchase the, the fire apparatus. That would amend the, the general fund operating budget to, to add those funds to, to that, to that financial plan.
So when we do a budget amendment, it doesn't have to be just one thing. We could add a separate line on there, imagine, couldn't we?
You could. If you get above 1% of the total operating budget, there is a requirement for a public hearing. I think this amount that we're talking about here would, would fall below that. But, but, so we would, we would potentially trigger a public hearing, but that would be the but that would be the only additional requirement.
So if we added on there some level of immediate tax relief on that budget amendment, it would be easy enough to put that, piggyback with it then, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you again for the information. Also, Chief, you know, one thing, a city is growing from 60,000 to like 8,000 a person. So, and it shows how we are growing in a growing city, so we do have additional needs as well, especially that corridor out there to Lake Road area and also in Tariana area, where I was, I was driving that area today. I had to pick up a student from Liberty. And it just makes it easier to go that back road, less traffic. I can, I don't go fast, but I can go easily from one park to the other. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. I just love the partnership. I think we all need to work together, be stronger when we work together. So I think that's really benefits a win-win in both situations. I'm really excited about this. I know we all were talking about how we need more fire persons and more staff in our, in our, in our first responders units. So I'm glad it kind of meets the needs of our city, as well as the growing needs of our city, that we continue to grow our community. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, I echo sentiments with my partners here that, yeah, thank you so much to, to Liberty for being generous with this offer and definitely coming together with our community and meeting a much needed need that we have. And so I'm, along with them, thrilled to support this and see where it goes. So thank you much. Everybody, appreciate it. Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry, Councilman Taylor?
I'd just like to thank Liberty University for all that they do. When I came to Lynchburg, I hear, I used to hear a lot of negative about Liberty. But here, up late, I see a lot of positive. Thank you.
I'll pass it on to Vice Mayor Privo for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number four, fiscal year 2024 to 2028 capital improvement program continued. Ms. Donahue.
Thank you. And you'll be excited to know I don't have a presentation. I am here to facilitate any questions you may have regarding the CIP. I didn't get any, really an email, so.
Okay. So, Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. Just a general question. So normally, what we do with the CIP is when the budget is rolled out, there's the, the CIP in the back. That's when we actually look at the specific items. So this is kind of just a preview, a preview before the items that are put in there, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. It's all reserved once we get into the actual operating budget, which then finances the long-term capital improvement assets. So I think that's a better time to discuss specifics, or more specifics, I guess. Thank you.
Councilman, questions?
The only thing that I'm curious about, and I think that several of us were, was, was about the appetite to privatize that Midtown parking deck. And don't need an answer now, but that would be something that would be great to have when we get into the process.
And we did hear that, and it's on my list.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else in here? No questions? Dr. Wilder?
I'd say enough to the, to the city manager, just asking for more, not necessarily about this information, but long-term needs of our city, long-term capital project needs. I think we did a workshop some, a couple of years ago, I think with Mr. Dr. Wodick, when he was here, he had a long-term spreadsheet about all the capital needs of our city and a long-term plan for that. I can't remember that number of that. I think they're working on that for me, just to sort of citizens can, so the citizens can understand that even though you may have a surplus here, a surplus here, we have so many needs in our community that we just can't fund everything. But I just want to have, kind of have an idea of what those needs look like.
Okay. And, and predominantly, we do have a, a bridge replacement, a road plan. There's a number of plans that go into, especially the transportation section. And I believe you've heard Dr. Wodick talk about the school needs that are really not in our CIP at this point until we get a plan from them. So that would be included in that additional.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fraldi?
I actually had a question, but what you just said, it piqued my interest. So, and I don't mean this against you, or really anyone, but, well. So we're getting our briefing this evening, looking forward to it, and our binders, and I can't wait because Rachel's working. So that means it's just me and the dog, and I'm going to be combing through this thing, probably enjoying myself, combing through it and putting a whole bunch of red lines on all the wonderful things we're going to try to do, and how can we make this work? Needless to say, though, we're doing that, and yet, we don't have the capital needs from the schools yet, and how that break down?
Go ahead.
We do, they sent it over, just the order magnitude was 100, 100 million over the next five years. And what we did was we prioritize particularly, we know that we're going to have two high schools, we suspect that we're going to have three middle schools. And, and as it related to mostly the elementary investments in capital, considering you haven't gotten the review, the full review of, of what that looks like, we parked those to the side for now and just together kind of worked to see whether or not the, what was the number? I think 20?
No, there's about 43 million.
Forty-three million, it's still, it's still in.
In five years. This is kind of a place.
They have a plan. We just, because you haven't had the benefit of the study, or the consultant, or some decisions haven't been made, rather than create much kerfluffle about all that, we just position the stuff that we think you're going to have to do anyways.
You know, one of the problems with you, Winters, that you give me things and it gives me more questions. Okay, so one of the questions, just for our newer members, is, and I didn't mean to scare you there for a moment.
No, no, no.
One of the things we had in our last budget was an allocation for a placeholder for elementary school construction. Can you walk through that so our new folks are up to speed? And I do have a follow-up on that.
And that is a project, last year, we kind of had the same thing. We had a number of projects. One was Sandusky Elementary School. And what we did is basically just kind of name a project, future school projects, and just put some money to it so it would be kind of a placeholder in the five-year plan with no specifics to it. And so in this, we just carried that forward to include that as well. Just so there's a placeholder of some sort in the five-year plan to know that school projects have to come back at some point.
So assuming the three new members are understanding that, because I don't have information, nor do I remember, was that allocation hard money put in last year, this year, or the following? Or was it built into debt servicing and allocations and, you know, forecasting out?
It would be debt service, because we would need to bond fund for those projects. They're large projects. So there's no funding set aside in this budget for those. It would be something we would borrow for later. We would use the line of credit first and then permanently finance that.
What I'm driving at, there's no hard money right now
No.
Holding there?
There, there's no borrowing for any of this five-year plan.
Okay. So I'm trying to remember what my initial question was. There, there was a back and forth that we've had, and I'm so sorry that we've been, haven't been able to connect. I've been mad all over the place. There was, there was a dialogue back and forth with myself and, and some of the city staff about how can we use some of the one-time funds available to offset for potential relief, what that may look like, what are our options? And one of the pieces of this puzzle that I was trying to articulate, what I was imagining, but also what we can do, relates to finding projects that would be utilized right now this year with some of that hard cash. And if I'm not describing it right, let me know. And what would happen if we removed those, creating a one-time pocket of money to then offset something for 365 days of a fiscal year? I know it's a very convoluted thing, but I think I've articulated it enough.
You, you've.
Good, good luck.
You kind of cross costs.
Right.
Okay. So in this plan, the only money that you really have to work with is what's allocated to Pago projects. And those are predominantly maintenance-type projects. So that's, as long as I've been here, that's how we have funded our maintenance on our building, is through what was in fund balance that we could allocate to help pay for maintenance type projects. But, so if you use that money to maybe stick it to a long-term project, say a bridge or something like that.
Even if it was just for one year?
You could do that, but now you're not doing maintenance. So you can't spend it twice. My husband tells me that all the time. But, so if you think about, when you bond fund, you got about $10 million is going to get you $1 million in debt service. So that one for one, it's really hard to swap that money out to really make that big of an impact. So you could take some of this Pago money and pick a project and say, we're going to move this project forward instead of using the line of credit, because there's no financing for these projects yet. The, the plan is to utilize the line of credit in two to three years, depending on what our line looks like, we would permanently finance those. So instead of using a line of credit, you would cash fund something. But that, we would have to take your maintenance money to do that.
Are there things in that, don't feel like you have to respond to, but this is just where my logic goes. Are there things in that maintenance category that could be put off to accommodate that one-year gap, quote unquote, to facilitate relief to the magnitude of, and this is bringing it full picture, I'm looking to get that, the total number was 4.8 million on the property taxes from, from two years ago. By my number, there's 3.6 remaining since we got a credit back last year. I'm trying to figure out how do we get that number back to folks in the upcoming budget? And if you don't have an answer right now, that's fine, but that, you can see where I'm trying to bring this whole picture, utilizing the CIP to create that opportunity for that 3.6 million to get back to folks.
And again, you're miss, you're mixing funding streams, because I believe you keep me honest here, city attorney. The only way that could go back is if it was entitled to a real estate surplus or personal property tax surplus.
I, and I, forgive me for interjecting. I know that full well, and I know the circumstances we're in right now are different than last year. However, if this is 3.6 million dollars of the real estate money, and this is 3.6 million dollars of other revenue, to me, they're interchangeable. I understand this money can't go back. I'm saying there are 3.6 million dollars that I'm trying to get back to folks using the CIP to do it.
I don't think you would be able to do it in that fashion. It would have to be traceable directly to the surplus funds of real estate tax revenues or personal property tax revenues.
So we couldn't reduce the CIP by three points? For example, to reduce the CIP by 3.6 million dollars and boom, there's our, there's the 3.6?
You wouldn't do, I would, wouldn't think you would do that if you had 3.6 million in those surplus funds. That is what would be used to be returned as the surplus. And then any, say you needed 3.6 million dollars for anything that would fall in a CIP expense, you would use that money instead. So you wouldn't, there wouldn't be any transferring to meet the surplus needs. The surplus is what it is.
I understand. I'm not talking about a surplus. And I'm sorry, for, to, to me, this makes sense, if no one else is understanding where I'm going. Here, here's where, here's where people are. Take all the surplus out, take the, the 48 million dol, throw that off. I'm not talking about that. I am strictly talking about, just right now, the 14 million dollars of additional revenue that was seen. I understand technically by state statute that's not classified as surplus. You have more money. We want to give that full 4.8 back in some way. Can we use the CIP to do that? What I keep hearing is respectfully, well, it's not a surplus, so therefore you can't. I'm not talking about a surplus.
Because, because that's where that money came from. That, that's where your Pago money came from.
Forgive me.
It came out of the same fund balance
That's not, that's not what I'm saying.
Of where that 14 million dollars was.
That's not what I'm saying. I, I'm saying you have 14, I, I can't make it more clear. I'm starting to get a little frustrated.
Well, I, I think the answer is just, you can't use it that way.
Okay. I have more than three points.
You don't like my answer.
I have more real estate money over here, and I have non-real estate money here. I'm not touching the real estate money. I'm saying you got more money in sales tax, meals tax, and all these other things. You're telling me I can't get that 3.6 back?
I don't think there's a provision in state code that allows us to do that.
It comes down to the Dillon Rule. The, the idea is, is that the reason those surplus funds under real estate and personal property can be returned is because there's a specific provision that speaks to that. There's no.
I'm going to, I'm going to interject again. If there's one rule that Councilmember Helgeson has taught me in the last two and a half years, and he's taught me a lot, he's never given an opportunity to say, have a bureaucrat say no. So I'm going to defer to Councilmember Helgeson, because I think he knows what I'm driving at. If the mayor would allow me, I'm very curious where he could take this, because I, I'm struggling to articulate this in a more simple way. I think the folks at home know what I'm trying to do, and I'm being told, no matter what I'm, given options are, no, 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 no. So, thank you.
Councilmember Helgeson?
Thank you. And I, and I think the easy thing would be, and I think he's not referring to the surpluses, as, as Councilmember Fraldi was saying, it's referring to giving this, the difference of 4.8 million per year minus the 1.2 million credit that came. So that's 3.6 million going back to the taxpayers. How do you get there? Well, you can easily do it by lowering the tax rate, by the real estate tax rate. That would be probably the easiest. And then you're not looking at, well, here's how much the excess was with the surplus, so you don't have to do that. Now, I think where the difference is coming from, using the CIP versus, we're looking at one-time money or the, the debt service for that one-time capital improvement plan versus the operating budget. So if we're going to say, let, if we were going to say give back one-time 3.6 million, that would mean we wouldn't do a 3.6 million dollar project. But the real estate tax rate is actually an ongoing operation. And so that would be the operating budget. So I think that's where you're saying, you mentioned the debt service, if it was a million dollars or 10 million dollar, it would actually only be about a million dollars principal and, and interest on that payment. So 10% of the million dollars is what we would save. So in order to get the 3.6 million, using that same analogy, we'd actually probably have to look at 36 million in a reduction in a capital improvement. Then we would be able to save that 3.6 million as an ongoing operation. So.
If.
If that was 10%, just meatball math.
And when you permanently financed it, it would reduce your debt service by that. But it wouldn't be immediate.
But, but it still easily could be immediate. I mean, you know, it actually could easily be immediate because you'd lower the, the rate. That's the easy way to do it.
Well, yes, but I'm saying.
Because you're going forward, you're not going retroactively.
Right. But I'm saying, if you took 30 million dollars until we permanently finance that, you're not seeing any impact on your debt service.
So the difference was, coming up in this budget, I think 11 some million was Pago money of that 43 million surplus was going to be going to pay-as-you-go capital for this budget year, which is mostly maintenance projects. And so deferring some of those maintenance projects, there may be an ability, but most likely not if they're maintenance. But that may be something that you can explore as well. What maintenance projects really, you know, sometimes we budget for replacing a roof, but we really don't need to replace that roof for another two years or five years. So maybe just because we have a budget, maybe we could push that off when we start looking at the capital improvement.
So if you reduce the transfer to a capital fund, that puts the money back in unassigned fund balance, which I don't think by state code, there's a provision to give that back unless you would reduce the tax rate going forward.
Absolutely. Exactly. That's, that's exactly the easy way to do it. So.
Those, to, to do, to do what you're suggesting in some fashion, it would have to be categorized as surplus, real estate, tax revenues, or personal property tax revenues. It wouldn't, that, that is what the issue comes to. So if, I guess it comes down, if, if staff and council would agree as to what is being returned by method ordinance that it was, fitting under that statute, then yes, it would be.
Hopefully that answered. Vice Mayor?
He has the floor.
Good? Any questions?
So I'm just trying to track on this. So, so following Councilmember Helgeson's conversation, Vice Mayor Fraldi's request, essentially, if we were to reduce the tax rate moving forward and not retroactive, it could affect what we're trying to accomplish. So it's not a question, really, just a statement that we would be able to do that. There's nothing that prevents us from acting as a body to reduce that tax rate moving forward, correct?
No, you could reduce your real estate tax rate.
Thank you. That's all I have.
You could.
Right.
Anyway, actually have a budget amendment probably coming up fairly soon.
Anyone else? No, we're good. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood. All right, moving on to business item briefings. Agenda item number five, conditional use permit. Agenda item number five, conditional use permit, residential, commercial, mixed use, 2307 Bedford Avenue. This item will appear before council for action on April 11th, 2023. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Uh, the purpose of this petition is to allow a two-story addition to the existing building at 2307 Bedford Avenue, which would contain 10 residential units. The existing portion of the structure would be used for commercial space and a small residential lobby. The proposal would exceed the ratio of 50% commercial to 50% residential, which is allowed by right in the B3 community business district. Residential uses exceeding 50% are allowable in this district upon approval of a conditional use permit from city council. The future land use map recommends a community commercial use for the property. These areas typically contain retail, personal service, entertainment and restaurant uses. The comprehensive plan states that in these community, community commercial areas, residential uses may be established on the upper floors of commercial structures, um, as appropriate. Planning Commission recommend, recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on March 8th, and this item would be scheduled for a city council public hearing on April 11th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Councilmember Helgason?
So you said that if, you know, the normal, the ordinance says that you're, the first floor needs to be business, and then the second floor can be, uh, residential, provided it meets a certain amount of business on the ground floor. But in this case, it's saying, hey, we're probably not going to have too much business on the first floor, but we want to go and, and double the amount of residential on the, and add another floor to it. Is that, and so with that, that would require a conditional use permit?
Um, well, so a majority of the first floor would be retained for commercial use. Uh, I believe the plan notes 3,300 square feet for commercial use, uh, some type of retail. They don't exactly know what the use is yet, um, with about, I think, 200 and some feet for a lobby, just as a residential entrance to access the upper floors. But yes, it exceeds the 50% residential to 50% commercial ratio.
So since there, so if the whole first floor is commercial, and then there's now two floors, those two floors, it would be one-third as opposed to one-half, just simple math, right? If you have three floors that are identical square footage.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you so much. You're on the next one, too. Yes, okay, moving on. Conditional use permit, uh, James Energy Center, 3920 Harbor Street and 109 Old Transferry Road. This item will appear before council for action on April 11th, 2023. Ms. Rachel Freshheisen.
Thank you again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The purpose of this CUP is to allow the installation of a battery energy storage system, which would connect to the existing Appalachian Power Company substation adjacent to the Rusens hydroelectric dam. The property is zoned R3 medium-density residential district. The zoning ordinance considers these uses a major public utility service, which are permitted in residential districts in, uh, in the case of approval from a CUP from council. The city's future land use map recommends low-density residential and resource conservation use for the property. In addition to residential uses, low-density residential areas may include public or institutional uses compatible in scale. Resource conservation areas typically encompass land with special natural characteristics that limit our land uses and development to protect the city's environmental health. And on privately owned land within conservation areas, the intent is to allow appropriate land uses and infrastructure as long as the environmental value of the area is conserved. At their meeting on March 8th, Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition with the conditions noted on your agenda summary. This item is scheduled for city council public hearing on April 11th. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Councilperson?
Just one comment, actually one, I should have said last time, because I don't have a comment on this, but just thank you for opening the door. I got locked in the, uh, in the stairway going up to physical development committee, and without you, I'd still been stuck in that, uh, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any comments on this?
Nothing.
Well, thank you for helping him out of the stairway. Oh, Councilmember Missions?
If anybody hasn't been down to Harbor Street, you should take a ride. That's all I wanted to say. Because I've been down there, and it's kind of a neat little neck of the woods in our city that, that you don't really even feel like you're in the city anymore when you're down there. I know you've probably been down there, you've been here many years, right? But yeah, if you haven't been down there, I suggest you take a ride. That's it.
Anyone else?
No.
Well, Councilmember Dolan and I did go down here there to check this site out, and we have quite a story. It was, it was a fun field trip. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Conditional use permit, Windsor View Townhome, 710 and 714 Leesville Road. This item will appear before city council for action on April 11th, 2023. Ms. Freshheisen?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Uh, the purpose of this CUP petition is to allow the construction of an 87-unit townhome development. A CUP was previously approved at this location by city council on September 24th, 2019, but it has expired. Uh, the property was also rezoned along with that 2019 C, CUP petition to R3C medium-density residential district. Townhome developments are permitted in these districts upon approval of a CUP by city council. The property is recommended for medium-density residential uses on our future land use map. These areas are characterized by smaller lot, single-family detached housing duplexes and densities at up to 12 units per acre. The CUP petition is for the same layout and number of units as the 2019 petition, with the exception that the entrance to the development would be limited to right-in and right-out turning movements. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition at their meeting on February 22nd, and this would come back to city council for a public hearing on April 11th.
Any questions? Questions? The Councilmember Missions?
How many acres is the site?
Uh, it's roughly eight acres.
Eight acres? And we're looking at doing 87 townhomes?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
That's the, that's the plan?
Mm-hmm.
What's that?
So it's like 10.9 units per acre.
So it's like 10.9 units per acre, but... Okay. All right, that answers my question. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Can you go into a little bit of the historical context with this property and, and why this is here again, and, and what this looks like?
Sure. Um, so this property, um, council may recall, um, was actually denied for a CUP for townhomes. I believe it was 2007 and 2015. Uh, the denial was mainly over erosion and sediment control. Um, I know this neighborhood had a lot of concerns about the environmental impacts. They ended up proffering with the last rezoning and CUP petition from 2019, um, that stormwater management facilities would be designed to improve, like, an increased runoff, uh, 30% runoff improvement factor, which, uh, only 20% is required by code. Um, so they were adding on 10% to kind of help the neighborhood, um, with their environmental concerns. Is that the history that, that you were looking for?
I believe so.
Okay.
Anything?
Two, I was here for those. So in 2007, when council denied it, there were, uh, there was the petition for 76 townhomes. Council denied it, that there was folks that were living right next door, Carol Van Blaircan and lots of other people that were in the Lakeland subdivision right behind there were concerned about the continuous, uh, uh, growth and density. Then it came, then they brought it back again several years later. Council denied it again, even though they changed the density, I think down to like 68, somewhere around there, so less density. And still council denied it because there was so much building going on in this area, and especially when the neighbors that were single-family residents right next door, um, this Van Blaircan passed away, who was the adjacent neighbor, he then bought that property, uh, her house and other, kind of a dilapidated house next door. They brought it back again in 2019. I think it passed, uh, a slim majority, or maybe a vast majority, I can't remember, um, but it, it barely passed in 2019, this time now back up for 87 units, um, of which since then, COVID happened, they had, I think, what, two years to begin, once it was passed, and then that CUP lapsed, um, so now it's back before us. And so, you know, looking at that historical trend, I mean, you see that, I think in the, uh, the previous discussion back on, on staff's report, shows the dates of 2007 it was denied, and 2016 it was denied, or 10, uh, 2015, and then it approved with some differences. And so now it's coming back again. It's a brand-new petition for us. So, um, even though it got approved before, it's still a brand-new petition to a brand-new council. And so I think we should weigh that accordingly, you know, when you're looking at the density on, on Leesville Road, so.
Anyone else? No? Vice Mayor Faraldi?
I have already spoken.
Oh.
Well, I've sent a question about erosion issues. Are they set to be resolved? Is that?
Uh, the erosion issues?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that was a proffer as part of the 2019 petition, so those proffers are still intact. So they still will be held to that 30% improvement, stormwater runoff improvement factor versus the 20% that state code requires. So those, those standards set by that rezoning are still in play if this gets approved.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Faraldi?
In keeping with the continuance of, uh, working protocol, gentleman's agreement, if you will, um, you know, I'm going to give deference to, to the wards in which these developments come. Um, I will say, at least these are townhomes, um, that, that does provide opportunity for folks to own and hopefully live in these, these developments. So I, I would ask council to at least consider that, but, um, understanding where this is in town and what we've seen in the development, I, I want us to be very, very mindful about how these projects come up and, and where we keep approving them. Albeit, you know, I, I think townhomes are going to be a big key to the future development of the city. If we're, if we're going to be saying, let's pump the brakes on the big apartment complex, it's okay, we still need to expand, there's not much green space to do it, townhomes are likely going to be a, a big factor in that. So just a healthy balance, I think, for this council to, uh, to weigh.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on. Uh, towing advisory board and procurement authorization. This item will appear before city council for action on March 28th, 2023. Mr. Matthew Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, as you all saw from the agenda item summary, uh, it is time again to revisit, uh, a towing contract for the city. As I understand it, the contract we currently have is with Beeline Transport, and is set to expire, uh, at the end of May of this year. As council recalls and, and can see from the packet, I've included a statute that outlines basically the requirement, uh, that the towing contract be recommended for approval by city council by a towing advisory board. This evening, what you have before you is a, uh, resolution, um, that tries to somewhat solidify a towing advisory board, kind of the guidelines and a procurement authorization. I will say this isn't a practice the city has done in the past. Uh, what has typically been done in the past is, uh, staff will, uh, try to get individuals to apply, uh, they would go simply off of the, uh, state code. To be able to, uh, meet the requirements of the state code, council would then appoint the towing advisory board and finance would begin the procurement process, and they would begin the negotiations, go through all of that. The towing advisory board would, uh, recommend a contract to city council, and then it would be approved. Uh, the purpose of this resolution, uh, albeit it, it is a little bit different from what you can see from the agenda item summary in 2017, there was the same number of members, at least voting members, uh, that were appointed by city council, as is shown on the, uh, resolution itself, except I've also added some non-voting members, uh, to basically provide a, uh, a broader look for purposes of, of the towing contract. Because the towing contract would include, uh, law enforcement toes, inoperable motor vehicle toes, as well as city toes of city vehicles, I thought it was worth a discussion about including individuals like that, especially someone from procurement to help in the negotiations and the contract, the contract, uh, uh, and RFP process and working with them on it. Um, so really, I, I, I submit this to you for discussion this evening. Certainly council could, uh, direct us this evening to, to go by the previous course that we have always gone by and just proceed in that manner. I do think having a resolution, uh, at least for staff and, and, uh, for the clerk to go by as well, you know, as well as procurement to see a physical authorization being granted and the purposes of the towing advisory board, as well as it being outlined what the makeup of the towing advisory board would be, there'd be some pros, uh, in having that. So that's, that's what I would offer.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from council?
So when is this coming up? This is the business item briefing, so when is this actually?
28th.
March.
Vice Mayor Faraldi? No? Are you stretching your arm? Okay, sorry.
No, it was popping.
Any other questions at this time? No? No? We're good? Okay, thank you, Mr. Freeman. All right, moving on. Um, claim litigation settlements under the self-insurance program plan document. This item will appear before council for action on March 28th, 2023. Mr. Freeman?
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. So what, what I have before you is basically an amendment to a portion of the city self-insurance plan. Uh, this amendment, as you can see from the resolution that's, uh, proposed in part of the agenda item summary, it does, uh, uh, two things. One, it increases the city attorney's settlement authority, uh, without council approval, from 20,000 or less to 55,000 or less, as well as, uh, for lack of a better way of describing, it codifies longstanding practices, I understand it, of, uh, for non-litigated property damage claims of, uh, uh, city departments where they may, uh, acknowledge where they are at fault contributing in a portion of, uh, city funds outside the self-insurance fund to resolve it without having litigation being brought about. Um, so really, that, that's what it is, uh, for council's edification, as I understand it, and, and council can see from the, uh, agenda item summary, this is just a little bit over the inflationary increase. As I understand it, the last time this settlement amount was visited, uh, was in 1986. So, um, that's what I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions? Any questions down here? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Freeman, I appreciate it. We will now move on to roll call. Dr. Wilder?
Congratulations, Heritage High School, back team, they do one state championship. I think probably the second year or third year in a row, so we can continue to great, excuse me, continue to congratulate them on their great service at Heritage High School. And also, congratulations to EC Glass basketball team. They made it to the state finals. They came up a little short, like three points short or whatever, but it had a tremendous run. I think the first time they've been there to the state championship, I think, since 1967, I believe. Uh, being a graduate of EC Glass, we're so proud of the work they're doing and, and Coach DJ Best and all the great team members that got to that point. So it was a festive event, um, a nail-biter, but we congratulate them on that great success. Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Dolan?
Nothing.
Uh, sir, go back this way, so let's go down to Councilmember Taylor.
We visited, uh, Darneton Elementary School yesterday. It was a good visit. See the young people and their teachers working together. It was, it was good, solid visit. It's, it's a solid school there. The building is in good shape. So it was a good visit.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Faraldi?
I want to wish our Liberty Flames men's basketball good luck tonight as they're hosting Villanova. It's a very big deal. I'm sure my uncle's going to kill me. It's a big no ban, but that's okay. Likewise, want to congratulate EC Glass on their, their strong season and, and more than anything else, putting their heads high and representing the city well, uh, to the Commonwealth at large. I do want to thank, uh, city staff for facilitating a good conversation over Enterprise Drive and potential improvements there, uh, and for council's awareness, I hope to have some, uh, proposals coming from that study and report in those conversations to help improve some of the traffic mitigation, um, things associated with, uh, that critical corridor and to help the residents there. And then finally, I do want to say thank you to Governor Youngkin, uh, for selecting University of Lynchburg to be a lab school partner. That is a wonderful opportunity for our city and our region, and, uh, really want to say, thank the governor publicly for, um, seeing the value of having a partnership in, in an urban setting centrally located in the Commonwealth.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so, um, I had mentioned-
So I had mentioned to our city manager that I would like to start acknowledging all of the wonderful departments in our city and just acknowledging our city workers and telling them how much we appreciate all the work that they do. So the easiest way to do it in fairness was starting in alphabetical order to the departments. So we're starting with the airport. So I'm going to highlight the Lynchburg Regional Airport tonight. During my tenure as mayor, I intend to acknowledge the work of each of our fantastic city departments. The city manager proposed acknowledging the departments alphabetically, beginning with the airport. So established in 1931, Lynchburg Regional Airport operates as a city enterprise fund and is fully responsible for performing all airport functions, including operation of their own police and fire departments. Airline service is provided by American Airlines with up to 14 daily jet flights to its major hub in Charlotte, North Carolina. Did you know that the airport offers airline passenger and aircraft support services provided by 10 aviation-related businesses and contributes $180 million in total annual economic activity? Also, due primarily to the extensive flight training operations of Liberty University's School of Aeronautics, our airport has been ranked as the third busiest in the state. If you're looking for a place to eat your lunch, visit the airport's Grab-A-Lot adjacent to the air traffic control tower. It's a popular spot to watch all the flights coming and going, fly local, support local, and fly LYH. Also, it had come to our attention after our last meeting that when we dissolved the 1993 LCS agreement, that some people in the city might have thought that that was a hostile movement on behalf of council and that that might have been received in a negative fashion, and we wanted to kind of clear the air here and let you know that city council's decision to dissolve the 1993 agreement with Lynchburg City Schools was done in good faith and with the expectation that conversations with LCS will remain ongoing. This vote was intended to keep lines of communication between city council and LCS open, and we look forward to having continued discussions about school needs throughout the year. Moving on, we will now go to agenda item number 10. Consideration of a closed meeting to discuss a contract matter affecting the city where litigation may be probable, and such discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city pursuant to sections 2.2-377A7 and 2.2-377A8 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, and consideration of a closed meeting to discuss appointments for the vacancies to the following boards and commissions: Community Development Advisory Committee, Greater Lynchburg Transit Company Board of Directors, Lynchburg Parking Authority, Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and the Youth Services Advisory Board pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
Second.
Thank you. Oh, can we cast our vote, please?
Question passes.
All right. We are now in closed session.